I'm John Snell, I'm chairman of the planning board. I apologize for not being able to attend in person. I've been dealing with COVID and I didn't want to make it a super spreader event there tonight. Okay, so we'll get started and we'll start with the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America.
In this republic, where it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
Since I'm not there in person, I'll ask Mary to just do the roll. I am not, I believe under state law that covers meetings and remote meetings. I don't count toward a poll for them. I don't think I can vote either or not that we're gonna have votes tonight, but I just wanted to at least go on the record as having the roll done.
Kevin Hamon. Yeah, Charles Oliver. Mark Jenkins. Mike Masaway. Mike, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Terry King.
Here.
That's right, Donna.
Here.
Okay. Chris.
Here.
And Johan Hoppa.
Here.
Glad everyone's able to make it. The first item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of our April 26 meeting. Hard to believe that's only last met, but that was only last met. Any questions or comments on the minutes from that meeting?
No.
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 If not, I have a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved. Terry King.
A second?
Second, it's Mike Masaway.
Thank you. Terry, Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Terry, thank you. We have no old business, but we do have a couple things on the new business. We have two projects that are in the works. The first being a presentation from the Christopher Communities for a proposed project at 104 Smokey Hollow Road, which is known as the Love Madre Landing Project. Those folks I think are here. I'll open the floor to you. Feel free. We do have members of the board did receive at least a digital copy of preliminary drawing here and the letters also from the Christopher Communities, the general overview. But if you wanted for the sake of our audience and the public that might be watching, just to provide a general overview as part of what you're gonna do. I'm sure you're gonna do that, but just wanted to add it in.
Absolutely. Just making sure this is on. Good evening, board members. I'm David Cox with Pastrow Associates, the civil engineer for the project. Also with me is Shauncey with Pastrow. And I also have Audrey in the back with Christopher Communities if you have any specific owner questions. But we are here at just a conceptual level for a two-story, 52-unit supportive housing for developmental disability residents. It really is a kind of an expansion right from St. Mary's, which is just to the south there. Christopher Communities owns that project. So it's really a good fit to tie into their existing staffing and housing and things that they have right there. So Christopher Communities has 1,300 units in upstate New York. So they're very well-versed and known in the housing world. They've been around for 50 years, so they have a very proven track record in St. Mary's right here in the Baldenville. So just to kind of give you a orient yourself, it is on 104 Smokey Hollow Drive. St. Mary's is their existing property, which is directly to the south. To the north, we have Edgewood Drive, which is single-family homes. And then we have the high school to the southeast there. That kind of orients yourself on the project. So the project will utilize the existing access for St. Mary's. So it'll tie in off of that, so no new curb cuts. We're proposing a two-story L-shaped building. Will have a mix of roughly 35 one-bedrooms and 17 two-bedrooms. Parking is on the north side of the building. There's kind of an open grass area that's really flat just north of St. Mary's. So that's where the building and parking will be going. And then as you head towards the school, it's pretty heavily wooded and also the contours, the grade falls off there. So we were proposing to have a nice walking trail through the wooded area. That would be a very nice amenity for these two projects. We also will probably have a playground area with some swing sets to the south here of this proposed building. And then perhaps a kind of an outdoor patio area looking out towards the woods that the residents could use. So it is a pretty dense buffer along the north edge to the residential properties. And then to the east there, it's very, very wooded. You can't see the school at all due to the dense woods they have there. So as far as drainage is concerned, we'll probably have some type of stormwater management, green infrastructure towards the front of the property. And that will discharge to the roadside swale along Smokey Hollow Drive and that heads to the south. There is existing sanitary on the property on our side of Smokey Hollow Drive. And then water is in Smokey Hollow Drive water, or right away that we'll tie into there. So yeah, we're just really at a conceptual level here, but we wanted to come before the board and, you know, and get feedback and comments before we, you know, start getting into the design and things like that. We know how much an important process this is of going through with community, with town staff or village staff to really hone in and have the best project possible. So as I mentioned, it's a two-story building, so it fits in with the existing St. Mary's. It's two stories, so it fits in well with the character of that neighborhood in there. It is tucked in off the street a little bit, so it's, you know, it's not right jumping out at you. It kind of fits right in there in the nice wooded area. And we're, you know, putting the majority of almost all the development in the grass area and preserving a humongous chunk of the trees. So more than 50% of the property is gonna be maintained with wooded area, which is really nice. But yeah, so we're here for any questions, feedback and...
This is Mike Masaway. My first comment is the location of the parking lot. In previous attempt to develop that piece of land, light spilling into the adjacent properties was a major concern of all of those property owners. Having a parking lot where it is, I don't like that strictly because of the issue with light all on with spilling into the backyards of all of those adjacent properties.
If I could tag off of that, Mike, this is Terry King. It looks to me like that might be 10 feet from those property lines the edge of that parking.
You got a good eye.
So, well, there's a scale on the drawing. But you don't even have space to plant a buffer or anything to stop the headlights because there's nowhere to, you know, the snow will go over it. So even headlights, it's gotta be insane there.
Yeah, so we, it's not shown here, but we are planning to have a fence along there to block headlights.
Okay. You're still gonna have parking lot lights though.
Yes.
Can you just tell me, I'm just curious a little more about the interaction between the two properties? I mean, the senior housing, is there interaction between that and the developmentally disabled building?
Audrey, do you wanna come up and...
Hi Audrey.
Yeah, just come, come right on. Sit in the captain's chair with me.
Sure. So, you know, I was saying, you know, the residents are gonna, they're gonna be, they're two separate, you know, housing entities. So whether the residents interact, I mean, that's, you know, whether you interact with your neighbors is kind of up to the individual. But yeah, in terms of, you know, there might be pairing of like maintenance and office staff just to kind of create economies of scale there, but...
I was just curious because it looked like there might be an opportunity to internally create some green space between the two buildings that could be shared or for interaction. And that doesn't seem to be taken advantage. I wondered if it was related to how the facilities will operate or...
Sure.
Because you have the patios on the ends, but I, you know, there's kind of that green space between that.
Right. Yeah.
Could functionally be a nice shared space if the properties interact.
Right.
I think that's a...
It was just, that was just a question.
That's a great, a great idea that we can go back and look at.
Anybody else?
Any other questions? I was gonna say, you know, related to the parking, the, and maybe Greg can answer this question, but I'm presuming that this plan has parking per whatever the zone is for the housing. But is that, are you anticipating a lot of parking for the residents? Or is it for folks that are working at the new facility?
We...
It struck me as a lot of parking for something.
Yeah, so some of the, you know, the developmental disabilities, it is a wide range. You know, some of them are way more high-functioning, have jobs, you know, and some are able to drive and things like that. So we're still honing in on that. But right now, we just went with the PDD zoning code. But we can look to see, you know, what is exactly required for this project and see if we can pare that down any.
I would echo the same concern of having the parking so adjacent to the neighbors. And, you know, but overall, you know, this is a potentially great use for this property. There are a couple other issues, just looking at a letter from the engineer. I think there are just a couple of things like, you know, if you're using the existing access off of Smokey Hollow, the same for St. Mary's apartments, there are access for, you know, fire trucks and things like that. That would be part of the planning. I'm sure you're giving some thought to that. And it sort of, it strikes me as sort of a wetland behind there. I don't know if that is a subject to... Sorry?
I said, that's why there's no building back there.
Yeah, exactly. That'll obviously be part of our environmental quality review on that aspect. I know, you know, I'm, Mike and I are sort of neighbors of St. Mary's. We live over on the northern side. I haven't seen much traffic at all. And how many units again, did you say you were anticipating? I heard 35 one-bedroom and how many two-bedroom?
And 17 two-bedrooms, so a total of 52.
Any other thoughts or questions from other members of the board? Do we have any neighbors of this proposed development?
There are several with their hands up. Can you see them?
I just have a question. I mean, I'm a resident of Tenagewood Drive. We were here when the fire department proposed. Parking lot was set at 20 feet off the property line. I understand that is their property. I don't know what the zoning is, you know, what is the standard? How far can you be off the property line for a parking lot? I appreciate the board bringing up those concerns because that is directly shining, those headlights are shining into my bedroom. So I do have a big concern about that. There are also, he made mention of wooded area that's gonna remain. That hedgerow, is that all going away? Is that part of that gonna stay? There are some mature specimen trees on certain people's property, on their property. I apologize. On their property that may or may not act as a buffer for some of those. Are those gonna stay? Are those gonna go? I would, I found it very hard to swallow 20 feet. 10 feet has got me sick.
Right.
So...
And I think as we go through this process, we've had quite a few projects and others feel free to weigh in. The board, we're always very conscious of at least expressing during this process of, you know, light spilling from projects into neighbors. And it's part of the village code that you can't have light spilling. Often that refers to, you know, what we call streetlights or ambient lighting. But also in case of the parking lot, headlights. I understand the value of a fence, but there are other aspects when you are having this sort of commercial use up against the residential use that I'd like to see us be very mindful of providing adequate shielding for the light. My sense is that there isn't other sort of, it's not a commercial activity kind of structure and that sort of thing. The biggest thing isn't noise or traffic, it's light. And maintaining that kind of buffer, I think, is important. That's my, do you have other members of the board have other thoughts?
Yes, Donna Freyloo. Yeah, I had a similar question about whether you've looked into any methods of, you know, shielding the fixed illumination of the parking lot.
Yeah, so all the lights will have house shields on them. So that's a shield on the back of the light that prevents any light from going in the direction you don't want it to go. So it will be directed towards the parking and will be completely shielded from any of the residential property.
But there still be reflection from the surface of the parking lot? I mean, it's, there's gonna be a glow?
There, yeah, there may be some, but there...
Sounds unavoidable.
Right, but there should not be, there won't be lights, you know, directly shining at the properties. And one of the other, you know, thoughts where we're just, you know, one of the thoughts is possibly, you know, swapping the parking in the building, so pushing the building up and then having the parking in between that proposed building and the St. Mary's. You know, I didn't know if that was what the board's thoughts were on, you know, would that be more favorable or is having a building closer to the neighbors, is that worse?
We've got a two-story building, you've got illumination in the windows of the second story. So, I mean, it's maybe not as bad as headlights, but it's still illumination. Even with the dark sky compliant light fixtures, you still do get reflections and so forth. So I'm not sure that would solve the problem, but I'm only one person.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think it would depend, you know, it's a two-story proposal, not three-story, which would at least be, you know, comparable with the residential homes farther to the north. But, you know, depending on what you're looking at, I don't know what the residents' preference would be, you know, based on light. These are, again, this, you know, my sense based on the St. Mary's lot is there's not a lot of activity from the lot. It's not a traffic issue as it is just the light. And as Donna said too, it's the ambient light from streetlights and potentially from, you know, lights that are mounted to the outside, the exterior facility.
Just, just as it, to bring up his, I would much rather have a parking lot in my backyard than a two-story building with 20-some odd residents looking into my backyard. Ultimately, I would like nothing. But if I had to choose, I would rather the parking lot versus the building.
Which is the path they took.
There's sound in parking lots. And if residents are going to work, they're probably going to work at different times. And it's very hard to get into a car and start it without making any noise. And noise is not stopped by most fences.
Sorry, couldn't hear all of that, but...
It's about the noise from cars.
Buffering for noise from vehicular traffic on the property as well as light.
Scraping your car in the winter, she's getting at.
Scraping the car, starting the engine, slamming the car door.
Right, that's what she's, that's what she's trying to tell you, John.
Right.
Yeah, snow piles.
I know, it's hard to hear.
Morning hours.
Yeah, and that's the consideration. I mean, the representatives from the, from the Christopher Communities, you know, hearing this, I think, you know, overall, you know, the use and the application are strong. I think these concerns of neighbors are something to heed in coming back with a more detailed design. And I understand that you're at the point where you're looking at, you know, should you proceed? And, you know, overall, my sense is with some consideration to what some of the neighbors are saying about both the light and sound, particularly with the parking lot on the north side, it seems reasonable. I don't know if others have thoughts along the same lines. But we're not acting tonight, we're not voting one way or another. I just wanna be able to project a realistic expectation.
Excuse me, I'm Jim Ebersbach. I live down at 22 Edgewood, what I refer to as the wet end of the street. When the fire department had a project proposal in 2015, there were two wetland areas designated on their plan. Behind the building on the east side, where you show your walking path, they had their building setback 100 feet from a line that was called New York State Wetlands, which would be the last piece of the property. And then at the other side of their plan on the west, they had a notation that they were 100 feet from the federal wetland, which I believe is on the other side of Smokey Hollow. So those, my concern would be drainage, more water. I have a sump pump that runs 12 months a year. My neighbors do too. We went, you know, we're not looking for that swampy area that would be pushed toward us. And I was just wondering if in fact it is wetlands in those two areas that should be protected.
I guess it's up to them to tell us.
Yeah, we have not gotten to that, that level yet, but we can certainly do our due diligence and investigation to make sure that there's a, you know, if there is wetlands, that we're staying, you know, the proper distances away. And as far as drainage, I am taking all the drainage towards Smokey Hollow. I'm not taking anything towards the east or the residential property. So I don't, because that's just a bad, it's a bad idea. You know, you're gonna get complaints and I'm gonna get yelled at. So yeah, we're taking drainage towards Smokey Hollow, not towards residential properties.
How would the snow would flow?
And Greg, I don't know if there's anything else on the wetlands issue that you may recall from some of the previous development ideas there. Obviously, you know, we would have to go through, the whole project would have to go through environmental quality review and make sure, adhere to those kinds of, you know, if it is in fact wetlands or rules about that and the distance and all that, and all that jazz. So those would certainly be taken into consideration. As the developer, you know, we understand that you don't wanna go down all those paths, which start to cost you money, without having a sense of the viability. But there may be some reference material available through Greg's office on some of that as well.
From the last, the fire department plan that we had, there was a delineation of wetland. I believe it was a probable wetland. I don't know that they actually had an engineer go in and delineate it, but that is something that we should, I can look at the previous plans, but I think that's part of the environmental quality review that we need to obviously see what's going on back there.
Yeah, according to Greg S., not, I'm forgetting, A., says the DEC indicates that a portion of the site is within the buffer area of wetland B A L 11. That would need to be confirmed if that is in fact the case. And if it isn't, it's subject to other kinds of stipulations, of course. Any other questions at this point? Okay, hearing one.
Sorry, I have a question. Sorry, my name's Nick Jarvis, I live on Edgewood Drive as well. As far as current zoning, what's in place right now would allow a building like this on that property?
Yes, this is the allowed use multi-family group home, senior housing. That's what would be allowed on the parcel.
I guess my general comment for Baldenville is that I just moved into the house about two years ago. It's like less than two years. And I'll be absolutely livid if this goes into place because the rosy picture that's being painted about the trees, there'll be trees remaining in the wet part where you can't develop it at all. But behind our houses, the five or six, as you leave Smokey Hollow Road and go down Edgewood Drive, all those trees are gonna be gone. And behind our houses, we're gonna have a residential house. But to me, this is a commercial building. It says 31,000 square feet, two stories, a parking lot with 60 spaces on it. Like I said, I'm gonna be livid that's behind my house. Because I still understand how, I'm sorry, I don't know terminology that well, but zoning would currently allow for something like that jammed right behind our house?
More of a comment, I guess, than a question, but I live exactly behind where that parking lot's gonna be. Right now, as I look in my backyard, I can already imagine the cars parked right there. And it perplexes me that Baldenville would allow that to happen. And it's gonna, I'm already pissed off about it. And quite frankly, I'm gonna move and sell my house if it goes through. And I don't know why Baldenville would want that from people that have worked as hard as I have to buy a house in their community and live here.
I'm sorry, I had one more...
Thanks for your comments. One of the things I wanna, I wanna make clear...
One more, one more comment.
I had one more comment about the parking lot. It's gonna generate a lot of heat that's gonna get to the neighbors. Because parking lots absorb heat and then they release it all night. So their ambient air temperature in hot weather is going to be hotter.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that part of the goal and responsibility of the planning board is to take the public feedback on projects like this. There's also, within the zoning rules, they're designed to make the best and... There's also, within the zoning rules, they're designed to make the best and best use of property and, which is why the zoning rules exist. In this case, as Greg said, you know, this is an approved use based on the broader plan. And what the planning board always tries to do, along with the village board, CBA, and others, is balance the interests of the community with the rights of the property owners within that construct. So our ultimate goal is not to be arbitrary or to be hasty about determining the shape of these kinds of developments. But our goal truly is to balance those interests. And I do appreciate everyone that came out tonight and being, having their thoughts presented and heard. I hear that, and I do believe that the other members of this board hear your comments and concerns well. I just want to make clear though, that we're, our goal is to balance the interests of the property owners on both sides of the line and the rights as they have to develop those properties. With that, thank you, folks, for that presentation. We'll move on to the CDS life transitions presentation for the, what we're calling the Phillips Street Development. I think there's a different name for it now, but I think we all know it by the Phillips Street.
Thank you very much for providing feedback. This was most helpful. I can go back now and see what I can change, modify, to make a better plan. So, and thank you, everyone from the public, for coming out and letting me know your concerns.
Thank you.
And feel free to reach out to Greg for specific questions that you might have in our code office. But thank you for your time, appreciate it. I believe the, the CDS folks presented to the village board last, last week? I forget the, I'm losing track of time.
Yep, would have been two weeks ago, but yep.
Two weeks ago already. Sorry about that. And the village board didn't take any direct action to date, but I believe that the intent was to come back before July deadline that you have. I'm not sure if that meeting is, I think that meeting is this Thursday, is that correct?
Next Thursday.
We don't, we as the planning board don't yet have an, an action to take here. And I believe Greg can confirm that, right?
And I can start with a brief overview if you'd like, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Wonderful.
Good, great. Who is yours?
Thank you. So my name's Brian Bouchard. I'm with CHA Consulting, project engineer, working on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Justin Miranda with CDS, who's the applicant and the developer. And we also have Corey Hourback, who's with Barclay Damon, representing the project team. So as the chairperson had mentioned, at the request of the village board, we are attending tonight for the purpose of our zone change request in order to obtain a recommendation from this board, the planning board, back to the village board regarding the zone change for their next meeting. Just to give you a little bit of context with the plans that we submitted, the project location is 19 Phillips Street. It's approximately 15 acres of vacant land near the northwest corner of the intersection of Oneida, which is to the bottom of the page, and Phillips Street, which is off to the, the east. This is directly adjacent to the Candlewood Garden apartment project, which is just to the east of us there. And the current zoning of this parcel is R1, which allows for single-family and two-family homes. And the request that we've made is to change the zoning to R2, specific to allow multifamily dwelling units within the, the project. Included in our application was the site plan that we've provided that shows the layout and construction of various apartment buildings. Each apartment building on here contains 10 units. And the plan would be to develop it in phases. So what you see on this page is Phase 1. This would include seven buildings within Phase 1. And then in the back portion of the property, constructed obviously after Phase 1 is complete at some point in the future, would be an additional seven buildings. The project would also include, at the front of the project, a clubhouse to kind of formulate a residential community with various amenities in the clubhouse. And there would also be play space outside and parking associated with that. In terms of the site access and where the parcel is located, site access would be provided off of Oneida Street. There's an existing paper street that was contemplated for access to this parcel that's a current right-of-way from the village. So we would use that as the driveway entrance off of Oneida Street. And also have a secondary access point off of Phillips Street to the east there. We've included a summary of the bulk regulations that compare the proposed project to the R2 district, which describes how we meet essentially all of the requirements within the R2 district, including the, the building coverage, the setbacks, parking counts, and things of that nature, which is why we selected the R2 district. And also, because of its location, it is consistent with the zoning of the Candlewood Gardens property that's next to us. So with 15 acres, there's plenty of space to kind of space the buildings out and offer plenty of green space in between the buildings. This is obviously something that we're looking for your support and recommendation back to the village board on, based on the project's ability to provide, obviously, the necessary housing, but also its, its location and proximity to things like the school and obviously also, you know, walkability throughout the village as a whole. So look forward to any comments and obviously the recommendation that you could provide us back to the village board, understanding that within the zone change process, that this is feedback from you and that ultimately, you know, should the project move forward, that we would be back in front of this board as part of the site plan application to talk about more specific details relating to things like sidewalks and landscaping, stormwater utilities, et cetera. But what we've provided to date is, is the conceptual layout to visualize how the R2 district could be implemented within this property. So with that, turn it back to chairperson and the board.
Thank you. And just to be clear, since the village board hasn't acted yet, they tabled the zoning change, we as a planning board don't yet have an action to take. But in anticipation of, of the, the village board doing that, we would then go through the formal process. But with that, I would open, you know, questions to members of the board on, on this project. I will just add, I think this is the first time I've seen the actual footprint of both Phase 1 and Phase 2. And I know that at an earlier meeting, that may have been the village board meeting, actually, that, you know, some of the existing neighbors there on Phillips Street has some concerns. But I, I do notice that the footprint is well away from both that street and those existing houses on, on Phillips. And it seems to be sort of a park-like design. I know that the overlays from the, the pronounced that we have, the match, to show quite a bit of the existing wooded area. I noted in the design that obviously there's, won't be a remaining 15 acres of wooded area. But it, it seems like that is, one of the goals is to not sort of flatten this property, but to take advantage of its wooded areas and existing vegetation.
Exactly. So to answer a few of those, right, you know, I maybe should have led with the setbacks that we have versus the, you know, the prior discussion. But there is opportunity to maintain, you know, 50 feet or so of buffer space between the buildings themselves and any adjacent residential properties. And also, you know, that's only a few of the buildings where we do border the residential, the existing residential. So a lot of what we placed was kind of in the back of the site because of the size parcel that we have. And you're correct in that the building coverage, the actual footprints of the, of the project, total only 12% of the lot. I don't have in front of me what the overall coverage of impervious surface would be, but obviously with what you can see in terms of asphalt and buildings is, is, you know, a, a small portion of what property could remain. And there's fairly, fairly large areas in between, you know, the roadways and the parking areas that could be maintained even as buffers between our own residential buildings. So definitely, you know, enough space here to, to kind of work the project in order to have those appropriate buffers that you talked about, so.
If I could differentiate between the Phase 1 and Phase 2, we're coming, I'm sorry, I'm Justin Miranda with CDS Housing. We wanted to portray what could be. We're looking at this from a project from our Phase 1 perspective, where there is a potential because of how large this property is. This is something that while we go through, working on this project, which could take upwards of just getting Phase 1 completed a year, possibly a little late, longer, you're talking about Phase 2 would be somewhere down the line of four or five years down the road. We wanted to put everything out there so we're not coming back to say, hey, we're, we're going to do this now. This could be, we're not sure if we're going to be there. It depends on how well the first portion does.
Right. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions from the members of the board?
Yes, yes. Donna Fryloo. This looks to me like a very heavily car-dependent pattern of development. You know, typically, you know, to, to me, I, I think density is a good thing on the whole, but only if it accomplishes what density is supposed to do. And that is to mitigate things like traffic. It looks to me like this could really generate a lot of traffic on Phillips Street, East Oneida, going into the village, through the four corners, out to Route 31. Do you have any thoughts on how you might mitigate that issue?
Absolutely. So knowing that we were going to be navigating this process over the next few months, which is basically the start of summer as of, you know, a week or two ago, before we even submitted the application, once we had an idea about the scale and scope of the project, we did reach out to the New York State DOT. We are not on a DOT roadway, but we know how close the adjacent intersection is with Oneida and 31. And they were thankful we reached out to them. And they gave us guidance in terms of what they would expect to see in terms of a traffic study, the trips that would be generated, and how those adjacent intersections would be impacted by the trips. We were able to go out and get our traffic data prior to the school closing so that our traffic study is representative of, you know, the longer duration of when school's in session for the morning AMs and peak, peak hours. So I believe we just got that traffic study back this week, which, you know, is certainly something that we'll provide to the board. But, you know, in general, with, with residential housing, obviously, there's a regular, a more regular schedule of people leaving, you know, in the morning and coming back in the afternoon. So our traffic study will be specific to what's generated in terms of a residential development. You know, parking's provided because people still do have cars. The idea here would be to create sidewalk connections and other things that promote walkability within the village as well. So obviously, people who have the ability to go, you know, down to the park for, you know, the festivals and the other things that we have, like the concert tonight, would have ample opportunity to do so with, with the walkability that we can include within the project, but also out to the existing sidewalks that we have within the village too, so.
It's still nearly a mile to the four corners.
Sure.
So.
Understood.
Realistically, you know, just how walkable is it going to be?
Understood. You know, it, it is, it is kind of a, a little bit further away, but still being able to provide sidewalks and things, whether this, you know, any type of residential housing. It's promoting the ability to walk, and whether you have the ability to walk a mile is, is, I guess, up to you. But we'll certainly make accommodations for that.
I have a question, just along the border of the Oneida Street back properties of those homeowners. With the 40-foot setback, would that be a grassy area? Would that be wooded area? Would that be bushes, fencing? Or what would, what would that look like if you guys thought about that?
So we haven't conceptualized grading. There is, to the, I guess, to the east of the driveway entrance, there's a very steep slope. The majority of that, even from the property line to the access road, which is probably greater than even 100 feet, would be maintained just because it's, it's really not too developable in terms of the grade that it has. But with the 40 feet, I would expect maybe 10 feet or 15 feet inboard of that would have to be cleared just for the construction to take place. But that we can establish a grading limit such that whatever natural vegetation is there, and it is fairly wooded, would be preserved within that buffer area. So the intent wouldn't be to clear up to the property line, but to use that as, as a buffer. You know, honoring the setbacks is one thing, but using the setback to maintain that natural vegetation is something that we can also delineate on our plans.
And it's something we kind of pursue down the road. We would take a deeper look at that. And if there's something we have to do to enhance, we will obviously work with that. And just to point out, these are townhomes. That's something we felt was very important. Instead of having a large, massive building that's going to be, you know, all the traffic, all the parking lot put into one place, we felt like this is more appropriate for the setting of what we're trying to achieve and.
I know it's early in the process, but do you anticipate a pump station for sanitary on that site?
We have quite a grade change. The majority of our site actually sits higher than where we would be outletting to on Oneida Street. So although I don't have specific inverts of the sewer that we'd be tying into, presumably, the majority of the project can be gravity-fed to the existing system at the connection point on Oneida.
My concern was the depth of the swell that runs down through there, trying to get through that. And if you do have a pump station, would it be private, or would you expect the village to take it?
So depending, that's like a very, I guess, pointed question for where we haven't really investigated the holistic approach to the sanitary sewer, the, you know, capacity analysis that we need from the county as well. To answer your question about grading, I think we can be able to directionally drill under that drainage crossing that's there and still get gravity out to Oneida. I would assume that if we would have to pump, that we can have those conversations, you know, at the point, depending on who it benefits, right? If it's just us that would benefit from it, then it would likely probably stay private. But obviously, we would be looking for the village's system in terms of the gravity system to extend both for, you know, water and sewer into the project site. But if, if there's a need to lift a building or two into that system, maybe it's something like a, a private pump station that could serve those, those isolated instances within certain buildings if that needs to be.
Thank you.
I had one comment. In, in similar developments that we've dealt with over the last 10 or so years, we've generally preferred that things like clubhouses, playgrounds, pools be pushed more towards the center of the development so that there's, the noise isn't near neighbors from that type of thing.
Sure.
And we will want sidewalks, which I know you said would be in the future, but.
Yep.
Those will be required.
Understood. So the sidewalk's an easy answer. The clubhouse is certainly something that Justin and I can, can go back and look at re-signing.
We've done that before and, and, you know, property owners have come and put them adjacent to the other property owner's lines. And we just have always said they, they need to be back because they generate more traffic, more noise.
Understood. That's a good comment.
You don't have a pool, but those really generate a lot of.
Yeah, right.
Are you going to have a pool? Just kidding.
So we'll, we'll consider that comment for sure and look to see what we can do to, to shift it around a little bit. Obviously, the approach was, you know, when you come in, having a spot to go in terms of the, the clubhouse. And then also.
We use that for rental offices as well, the clubhouse? Will that be that?
Yeah, like the leasing office. And then, and then the other aspect is probably not going on the other side of, you know, the project because that, as Justin had mentioned, if we're showing Phase 2, but that's only to validate. if we're showing Phase Two, but that's only to validate, I guess, holistically what the project could be in terms of the secret process and things. But if Phase Two wasn't to occur, now you have the clubhouse in the back. So it may be shifting around some of the buildings and finding space for it still more proper to the center of Phase One.
Yep.
But we can certainly, I think, we have the room and the ability to, to move it and still make it visible and get it away from the property line.
And it looks to me like in Phase Two, your buildings that are along the Phillips Street property are at least 40, 40 feet in from the line? Is that about right?
Correct, yep. 40, if not 50 feet.
Yeah.
Right, I think the side yard setback there is, in the R2 districts, like eight feet or something, but obviously, we're trying to maintain...
It looked like 45 maybe-ish.
Yeah, consistent buffer there, same with the front. So, yeah, if it's not, if it's not 50, it's probably 45.
And I'm also curious, which no one may know the answer to, the, the properties adjacent to the, the street boundary, the NRJ properties, are they vacant? They're vacant properties? Okay.
The, the NRJ properties, sorry if I could speak to that. Can you grab the button there? The, the NRJ properties on either side of the Pine Street extension are owned by an individual that does plan to improve those properties with two family homes.
Okay.
He's partially cleared the properties and, you know, COVID, so he's looking to start those maybe next year.
Thanks, Greg.
Sure.
Thank you.
I can just, sorry. I was just going to make one comment. I'm going to leave some literature. Although we're kind of early in the phase here, I think it's important to note the quality of work that we've put up. In Cicero, right now, we're working on a Phase Two on Knowledge Lane for an apartment building that we're working on. Granted, it's a senior building, but it's a good representation of what we do and the quality that we are, and it's not too far away. We've also been working on townhomes in Rochester, and we've got some other projects that are going on too. But I would really encourage you guys to take a look. If anybody wants to set up a tour, or take a look at the product that we are putting out there, and these are state-of-the-art, I would really encourage you to do so.
I have a question about that too, because I took a look at a few of the other properties as John and the Webster and Elmira. Which one would this most closely be aligned with? Because it seems like there's a few different uses between the four of them, and I was curious which one you made.
Either for those ones? Those are senior projects, so that's like one, like a large L-shaped building, kind of similar to the one that you guys just heard about previously, where there was like 50 units in there. Right now, we are in, we just finished up some townhomes in the city of Rochester that are, they are true, they're townhomes. So you're talking about, we're doing 10 units per building, correct?
Correct.
And, I mean, I can get you some literature that's obviously kind of being updated as we speak, and we just started renting those up. So I can, or if you email me, I can get you some of that, so you can take a look. Or if you're in Rochester, be more than happy to take you there.
Thank you.
And these are market rate, is that correct?
So these are affordable.
Affordable, okay.
So they vary. So our version of affordability, this is not, I just want to distinguish this is not low-income housing. These are people that, there's various scales, and you're, just to give you a kind of rough idea, this is still early on, so don't hold me to these numbers, but I wanted to give you kind of an example. One bedroom apartments roughly run about $770, and these are going to go upwards of, depending on the income level, levels, up to $1,200 a month. So these are people that need a little assistance, that have accessible money, that they can't be, rent overburden is the term I'm working on here. So there is, they get some help on this end, so they can make ends meet when they have to make choices between food, taking care of everything on their daily basis.
There's a recertification process to that every year for the, the AMI component, right?
Correct.
Just to make sure that there's an increase in income, that that scales accordingly.
Correct. So the, the idea is, I mean, this gives, whatever the situation the person is in, they look at that, maybe there is, you know, working towards them going to more market rate or getting their home, or, you know, getting to that point. So you're absolutely right.
Are you working with any funding sources?
Correct.
HCR, HHAP?
Yep, HCR. Not HHAP on this. We would be looking towards ESHI.
Okay.
To help supplement this. So as you probably know, this is a process, and this is going to take a while to get through.
Getting your ducks in a row will take a while, especially with ESHI.
Correct.
Are any of the other projects that you've referenced a moment ago, location-wise, AMI-oriented projects, or are they a whole market rate?
They're all AMI.
Okay.
And I saw somewhere in the application, it's like 80% median income?
So, yeah, it's going to vary. So based on the market study that we completed, it hits a number of areas. And, you know, as we go through this process and work through that, we'll have kind of more ironed out as we go along that we can share.
Correct, less than 80%.
And one thing you...
One second.
Yeah, what I was going to say, one of the things that I noticed in here was the Division 14 fully handicap cap accessible units and three units for persons with visual hearing impairment. Is that the projection for the Phase One, or would that be the total Phase Two?
That would be for Phase One. I'll double-check that, but I'm fairly confident we're kind of portraying this one as the Phase One.
Okay.
Good question. Any other questions? Are there any residents that...
There's a couple.
One in the audience.
Three. They've got a few.
Do you want me to call them out for you, Jack?
I can sort of see.
Can you see them? Okay.
So my main concern is the traffic. It's like, nothing has been done to address the traffic issues that we have now. And this project especially will probably be adding 240 cars to the area, because each unit's going to have one car at least, probably half of them are going to have two. I live on Mechanic Street. It's a nightmare. It's the only traffic light on that side of the Village. We can't cross 31 because crosswalks have been taken away, but we can walk the heck out of our streets because we all have new sidewalks. But you just can't get to the other side of 31. The noise from, like, the other day, we're outside with my neighbors, and a new truck, there's this sudden influx of big new trucks. It runs the red light on Elizabeth and almost rolls over into another car, like tipping over, because it's not stopping, it's speeding. We have so many speeders, you can't even see what kind of car it is because they're going so fast trying to make the light. Or they're just jerks. I don't know. It could be both. But so, you know, 240 cars added to that mix does not make me happy, because, like I said, the number one complaint, as I understand it, in Baldensville is the traffic, but nothing has been done about it, except build more units, which adds more cars. And more noise, and more potential accidents. There's also been an increase in gunfire lately in, within the Village. I call and report it, but I don't know if anything is ever done.
Thank you. And I think, as was mentioned earlier, the, you know, the traffic study will be a key consideration for planning board review.
Well, I'm just saying, right now, my sister lives on the Van Buren side, and it takes me sometimes 20 minutes to go less than a mile, because the traffic is so backed up. The other concern I have is at the end of Mechanic Street, there's flooding on a regular basis. I believe that's Oneida Street. So if you're going to add more water, where's it going to go? Because there's already regular flooding at the top and the bottom of Mechanic Street.
Thank you. And as I was starting to say, that the traffic study and impact is not of any additional cars in that area or in any developed area, certainly an important factor for this board and for the Village to consider. Particularly, you know, not, not just the number of new vehicles, but where they're entering the system, both on Oneida and Oneida Phillips. And, you know, the traffic study will, I, I know I for one am anxious to, to see the results of that, and there's some important long-term things to consider with both Phase One and Phase Two of this project and potentially other development in that area.
And a third point. I would like to have a summer with no construction. We have been inundated with O'Reilly's, with the apartments, behind the Dunkin' Donuts, with various projects. And all summer long, I hear beep, 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 beep. And the sound, especially with O'Reilly's, the sound is bouncing around. You don't know where it's coming from. It's just loud. And it's like, this is not the neighborhood that I moved into. The neighborhood I moved into was relatively quiet, except for when school buses were going by. And yet, my assessment goes up and up and up.
Traffic is my big concern. I've lived in the area for 15 years. I live near the intersection of Oneida and Phillips. It's a four-way stop on a daily basis. There's people that run that light, or the...
Stop sign.
Stop sign. School buses, now that you change the bus route, or where the garage is, or whatever, the amount of buses that go up Oneida and now turn on Phillips is very noisy and pretty ridiculous. When we're in our house, you can't even, the windows close, you can't hear the TV or whatever turn it off. Traffic, I don't understand why a study would be done, because if anybody ever drives that, as many times I go from, I want to go towards Budweiser and I'll go down the opposite way to the traffic light, your street.
Thank you.
Candle Street, because I want to make a left-hand turn.
And you can't...
And right where you come out, Oneida, the end of Oneida where 31 is, you built the development or whatever there. So I'm trying to turn left. These people are trying to turn left or turn right, and sometimes, man, you gotta punch it to get out or go to the traffic light. And the other point I want to make is tractor trailers, they aren't even allowed on roads as long as I've lived here, and there is absolutely on a daily basis at least five or more. Can tell you pictures? I'm being generous.
I'm saying 30.
Ridiculous. And you can't even enforce that.
We've called the police department. We've called the mayor. The inundation of the tractor trailers is...
This is with school buses on the same route that they're doing.
Running, you want to build a development, I would assume that would have children, and you have tractor trailers running stop signs. They run that stop sign on Phillips and Oneida all day, every day. You...
Complete stop.
When you did your traffic study, did you take into account that we are still somewhat in a pandemic lifestyle where so many people are working from home? So you're going to have this construction going on while people are trying to work from home. What happens in a year or two with your traffic study today, when everybody starts returning to the workplace, if we are ever fortunate enough to get there? So the people who are staying home now are not part of your traffic study because they're working from home. Well, once you start construction, guess what? I'll be going back to the office every day because I'm not going to be able to function.
Function as an office in your home.
At home. So your traffic study isn't quite a true picture of what happens during the school year. That's my, one of my biggest concern, concerns, as well as the proximity to residential 50-feet buffers, not very much for 70, potentially 140 units, as well as changing the water tables in Baldensville, and the sewage in Baldensville.
You can, you can call the...
Thank you for your thoughts. I just want to, you know, wrap up this aspect and reiterate that the planning board is not taking any action tonight. We do appreciate your input. And, you know, this, this will certainly not be the, the last time that we discuss this particular project, or, or the other, for that matter. Are there any other questions that the board members have, or the CDS folks?
Well, John, I believe there was, wasn't there another member of the audience that had a question? I thought there was three people altogether, or maybe three of them. Maybe I didn't see them. I just want to make sure we addressed.
Oh, I mean, I can just, I'm actually on the corner. I am the corner lot. I'm Andrew Oldham, right there on the corner of Oneida and Phillips. I've already met the town board. That was, that was me two weeks ago, you know, just trying to understand what we have going on. But, yeah, I mean, I have two young kids, you know, that I already have. I, I understand, that may be Phillips Street, but if you ask anyone in town, that's 60 Road. And it's 60 Road for a reason. And I cannot let my kids go past my garage line, which, I mean, I have to say, it's at least 20 feet off the road. I won't even let them go that close because of the traffic. The, I mean, it's the excessive speeding and burnouts, especially when schools in sessions, because people just got a new car. But yes, the, the industrial section that's now using town roads, I can't, I don't think it was too long ago that we just had the road paved there on Phillips. It is tore up. So yes, there's, there's a major influx. There's, I mean, there's two houses down for myself. They just sold the house because they thought, and it went for a very high penny, you know, for, for, because they thought it was going to be nice and secluded. And now they're going to find out that every, a lot of what they're paying for is out the window. And I'm not opposed to having something developed there. I'm more opposed to the R2 status of it. You know, I'd rather see 15 houses be put in there. That's also, I mean, not your concern, but town board's concern. Tax-wise, I imagine that sits a little better in their favor, too.
Thank you. John, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board for the CDS folks at this point? And I, I don't know if, if the, the Village Board is bringing it up this week. Maybe Greg or Mary knows that. I don't, I don't know.
They would be, they would be discussing it possibly at the first meeting in July, so next week, next Thursday.
Okay. Yeah, okay. I thought there was a meeting before that.
Normally, it would be this Thursday, but it's the, still June. Normally, it's every two weeks, but sometimes there's a three-week between the last Thursday of the month and the first Thursday of the next month, or the second Thursday, I should say.
Okay. So based on the Village Board's action, we would have a, we would have a task as a planning board. So stay tuned for that. Okay, any other questions for these folks from the board?
No, we, so this is my dad. We live right on Phillips and Oneida, directly across from him. And we second everything everyone said, because I can't even get out of the driveway to leave for work. It's, I have to wait for buses, I have to wait for cars. No one lets you out. People are running the stop sign. We just recently had an older lady hit our little rock in the front of our house, like ran right into it, like didn't even stop. So I just, we just second everything everyone just said. Like, it's just, it's a hectic Four Corners. No one pays attention. It's just crazy.
Thank you. With that, I'll, I just want to thank the folks from CDS for coming With that, I'll, I just wanna thank the folks from CDS for coming, presenting. Thank you all, residents of the area, and also for coming and letting us hear your thoughts. We very much value that, appreciate it. That wraps up our actual agenda. Anybody on the board have any, anything to add before we adjourn?
No.
No.
Great. I did exchange a couple emails with the mayor this past week about the comprehensive plan. I was awaiting the new chairman of CBA and including votes from those groups to be able to fill out the rest of that. But there's been no action in the meantime, but hopefully in the next few weeks. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Over.
Second.
I second. Terry King.
Thank you. And we are adjourned.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Thanks.